I'd like to call the April 2019 PCOSON City School Board Meeting to order. And first up is pledge to the flag and inspirational reading. Brendan?
Thank you. Kaylee Jones is a second grade student in Mrs. Jaeger's class. Kaylee is the daughter of Lee and Holly Jones. Kaylee's favorite color is blue. She loves reading and writing at school and loves to snuggle with her family.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harper Edwards is a second grade student in Mrs. Insley's class. Harper is the daughter of Shawn and Shannon Edwards. Harper's favorite color is gold and she loves to paint. When she grows up, Harper wants to be everything.
This is an essay about how PCOSON Primary School has affected my life. The teachers I have had are Ms. Insley, Ms. Griffin, and Ms. Keener. They're great. They always help me when I need it. They give me examples, non-examples, they even go over concepts. They review important facts, too. They have provided different learning systems that have made learning fun. They also taught me to read. They taught me to read by giving me choices and using the five finger roll. Now that I am older, I love to read. I read almost every day after school. I am currently reading The Wizard of Oz, but sometimes I read different books. My teachers also taught me to think independently. They helped me do things without asking for help. This has helped me be better in school and also at home. Teaching me to be this way has given me confidence not only at home and school, but also on the bus, lunchtime, and with my friends. I have so many great friends at PPS. I love being a student there. I come home every day saying I had a great day.
Thank you all very much. Very well done. Next is student presentations. And PCOSON Primary School Reading Specialist Wendy Green. And students will be presenting being a reading role model. Ms. Green has made it her daily mission to prioritize reading success for our students and families. Students presenting this evening are Ruby Moffett, Easton Edmondson, Pippa Bray, and Weston Lee. And students, if you could please stay just a little while after your presentation, we're going to take a break so we can come speak to you.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Green and I'm the Reading Specialist at PPS. I'd like to share a project that we're doing right now called Read All the Books: Being a Reading Role Model. I'd like to thank the PEF because they awarded me a grant to make this possible. Now, I'm going to see if I can work this clicker. That's what I'm most nervous about. There we go. So before I begin this project, I'd like to tell you a little bit about my reading journey as a child. Reading was not always easy for me. That book right there was one book I wanted to read, and I discovered in first grade that it was hard. I looked at my peers and I felt that they were reading much better than I was. But despite that complex process of reading, I never felt defeated or frustrated. And I give that two reasons why. I had good teachers, but more importantly, I had two supportive parents who were readers. Because they were readers, I had access to plenty of books. They read to me. I went to the library lot, and I went to the bookstore a lot. They also talked a lot about books. I knew exactly what authors my mom liked, and I knew what genre my dad would always pick. Civil War, and I know exactly where the aisle was when we went to the bookstore. So, fast forward a few years. And I married a self-described non-reader. And in fact, one date, he told me that he was allergic to books. So, we had two boys and we gave them access to books as well. We read to them, we took them to the library. But one thing I felt they were lacking was listening to me talk about books. So I started a book club. And this is one of my most things I'm most proud of in my adult life, of course, besides my children. We've been meeting for over five years, and without fail, we have met every month. And I'm so excited about that. So it was started off just as a social adventure for me and my friends, but it quickly turned to something else. My children started asking, "Who picked the book? Haven't you read that book before? Who liked the book?" Next thing I know, they were starting... Yay! Next thing I know, they're starting to thumb through the books that I'm reading. And a miracle happened. About two months ago, I came home from school and my husband was reading one of our books. And he did not have allergic reactions, so I think he was lying to me all those years. So, as a reading specialist, I wanted that for all of our children at PPS. But we can only control what goes on in our building. So we started the project, Read All the Books. So every week, I go on their live morning show. It's broadcast to all the classrooms. And I read book clues. This was given by Mrs. Griffin. I read the clues, and the children have to draw a conclusion on what the title is. They quickly learn, if they read more books, they're more likely to know the title. The children think of their response, and they put this right outside my door. And you can see, it's just scrap pieces of paper. Some are drawings, some are invented spelling. But we get a lot of response. We put the clues next to the answers, and we put this out in our hallway display so the kids can see it. The buy-in from the students are whoever's name I pick out of the book, or the bin, they get to go on the morning show. Some of those glorious pictures are taken by peers while mid-talking. They get to go on and reveal the secret book, and we ooh and ah over it. So the buy-in is that the childrens love to be on the morning show with me. We put them all out on display. And I just did that because I needed to fill a space out in the hallway. But what I've noticed is that I hear kids out in the hallway saying, "Oh, you've got to read this book, it's so funny." Or, "You would never like that book because it's sad." So I was really excited, and my reading heart was swelling because they're doing exactly what I wanted them to do, to start talking about books. Okay, we've enlisted the help of the community. We've asked... What? Too far. We've asked parents, grandparents, and retired teachers. And they come in, and in any given day, you can go in the primary school and you will see people out in the hallway reading to students. We know as educators that children need to read and be read... read to a lot. We can't control that, so we do as best we can by this. And you can see that it's a pretty positive experience there. So I wanted to go a little bit further. So I've enlisted the help of eight families, and they've agreed, excuse me, to read a few books and to share their adventure on Facebook. This is our PPS PTO family page. And if you look up there in the corner, the right-hand corner, that family has six boys, all under the age of second grade and younger. And if that mom can read to all those boys, I say anyone can read to their families. But they give us some tricks of how they get reading in, in our hectic lives. But we still needed to get books into the parents. We wanted the parents to start talking about books and being a reading role model. So on the morning show, I will tell the kids the books that I'm reading, and I will show them the book. I will even tell them, like, "Ms. Richardson recommended this book. I stayed up really late because it was a great book." But we decided that we needed to go further. So we started posting on the PPS PTO Facebook page, just a quick little question of, "What books are you most likely to read?" And the parents respond. We take all those responses and we put them in a bin. And then we go onto Facebook Live, and we draw a child's parent's name out. Okay, so now this is tricky right here because I'm live with the kids, but I'm also live on Facebook Live. So I am not Savannah Guthrie, and I do not know which camera to look at. So it was kind of crazy, the first couple days where I'm looking at all the different cameras. So it's really exciting because the kids get to see the names I'm drawing with the parents at the same time. And then I go to the classroom, and I give the book to their child, and the child gets to gift their parent. So through reflection, I've learned a lot about my reading journey as a child, as a parent, and as an educator. And what I know to be true is that positive reading influences do make a difference. Thank you. Any book here. So, you guys, can you help me give a book to all of our panel up here? And make it... give it to a child? Any book? Right up here in the office room up here. And if I have any children that would like to come get a book, they can grab a book. Come on up here.
During the presentation. I like...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Pretty sure right now I can memorize her, you and my mother.
The second one. Amelia Bedelia? Oh, very. I have spent so much money on books.
I'm pretty sure I can...
He could probably staff the library.
It's always a good plan.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We have none this evening.
And next up is recognitions.
Well, we have the pleasure tonight of recognizing the teachers who were selected as the Teachers of the Years in each of our four schools. So we are going to bring them each up as I read a little bit about them. So first, we'd like to start with the primary school, and ask that Mrs. Lindsay Insley come forward, please. Mrs. Insley currently teaches second grade and is completing her ninth year of teaching, with this being her third year at PCOSON Primary. Previously, she was with PCOSON Elementary School for six years. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education and a Master of Arts in Teaching with Christopher Newport University. Mrs. Insley is a member of the division's math committee, serves on the primary school's leadership team, and is the team lead for the second grade. Outside of her professional life, Ms. Insley volunteers with PCOSON Little League's MLB Pitch Hit Run Clinic and with the American Cancer Society's Relay for Life. Her goal as a teacher is to build strong relationships with her students so she can not only educate their mind, but educate their hearts as well. To her, success is measured academically, cognitively, emotionally, and socially. Mrs. Insley wants her students to know that she is there for them, and they can rely on her to love them, support them, teach them, and challenge them. She believes in modeling this relationship building for her students so they will then engage in positive interactions with their peers. Mrs. Insley is a product of the PCOSON City Public School System, and she has fallen recollections of the impact her teachers had on her. She recalls how Ms. Adox created an environment that taught everyone to accept and embrace each other's differences and challenges, and how Ms. Campbell fostered her love of reading. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Lindsay Insley on being named as PCOSON Primary School Teacher of the Year. I know that we have several members of her family in the audience. If they could please stand so we could thank them for their support of Lindsay and her journey as a teacher. Next, we'd like to bring forward PCOSON Elementary School Teacher of the Year, Miss Emily Forrest. Please come up. Mrs. Forrest currently teaches third grade, and she is in her ninth year of teaching, with this being her third year in PCOSON. She earned her undergraduate degree and graduate degrees from the University of Virginia. She is currently working on her Education Specialist Degree in Educational Leadership at Old Dominion University as a member of the Monarch Lead Cohort. She serves as a VTSS Teacher Co-Leader, helping with the implementation of VTSS at the elementary school and throughout our division. Mrs. Forrest is also a member of the K-12 Literacy Committee and the Special Education Advisory Committee. She has hosted a teacher cadet student from PCOSON High School and is currently providing a field experience for a student teacher. Outside of the classroom, Ms. Forrest is active with her church's Make a Difference Project, serves as a local homeless shelter through the Port Emergency Winter Shelter Program, volunteers with the Odyssey of the Mind Program, and served as an assistant coach and team mom with PCOSON Little League. Ms. Forrest believes that all students can learn, and teachers must do everything they can to ensure that students do learn. This means building positive teacher-student relationships that allow students to feel safe in taking risks that will lead to their development, and using best practices in the classroom to make sure that students' academic needs are met. She also believes that an important work of her... important part of her work is collaboration, both among students and among her colleagues. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Emily Forrest on being named the PCOSON Elementary School Teacher of the Year. And I would ask that Ms. Forrest's family please stand so we can thank them as well for their support. Next, I'd like to invite our Middle School Teacher of the Year to come forward, Ms. Katie Lance, if you'd please come forward for us. Ms. Lance has 10 years of teaching experience with the last three in PCOSON, where she teaches sixth grade English. She received her Bachelor of Arts and Master of Arts degrees from Christopher Newport University. She currently serves as a member of the Instructional Leadership Team and English Department Chair. She is a TAC representative for the PCOSON Middle School, is serving on the K-12 Literacy Committee, and enjoys working with students on the Kiwanis-K Team, Battle of the Classes, and Battle of the Books. Outside of her professional life, Ms. Lance is a member of the Newport News Reading Council and was named their Literacy Teacher of the Year in 2015. She teaches because she wants to have a positive impact on the lives of her students. Mrs. Lance believes that her work and the work of all teachers is a starting point for her lifelong education, which fosters the emotional, social, and intellectual growth of all students. She works diligently to make her classroom a place where students can feel safe and concentrate on learning by modeling consistency and effective communication and building mutual respect between herself and the students. Please join me in congratulating Mrs. Katie Lance on being named the PCOSON Middle School Teacher of the Year. And I'm not sure if Katie's family could come this evening. Are they... Yes, they were all there when we recognized her at the middle school, though. So thanks to them. Next, I'd like to recognize PCOSON High School's Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd ask that Mr. David Blackstock come forward. After retiring from the Air Force, he first joined PCOSON City Public Schools as a bus driver, and then as a faculty member at PCOSON High School, where he currently teaches in the Special Education Department. Mr. Blackstock earned his bachelor's degrees from James Madison University and earned his licensure in special education from Old Dominion University. He is the Special Education Department Chair, is a member of the Special Education Advisory Committee, the VAP Scoring Team, the Ninth Grade Transition Committee, the Final Exam Committee, and he serves as a PBL Ambassador. Outside of PHS, he was a concessions volunteer and upward basketball coach. He's also served as a member of his church's music committee. Mr. Blackstock quotes Martin Luther King Jr. in stating that, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the real goal of true education." He feels that it is his job to help students by ensuring they receive the accommodations they need, while also helping students move beyond being dependent on their accommodations. Advocating for their success beyond high school is one of Mr. Blackstock's goals, as he wants all of his students to develop the personal skills they need to become critical thinkers and functioning adults in society. Please join me in congratulating Mr. David Blackstock on being named PCOSON High School's Teacher of the Year. I'd also like to recognize Mrs. Debbie Blackstock, his wife, who's here and was previously a Teacher of the Year for us as well. At this time, I'd like to invite Jean Eddy. She is the president of the Kiwanis Club, to come forward and provide some recognition to our Teachers of the Year.
Can you hear me without a microphone?
You could do it on the microphone for the TV's sake. Oh, for the way... Thank you.
Oh, and I've got to step.
You can move that.
This is... This is very exciting to be here this evening. I will say, I was quite intimidated by this group of people here, but once all of those kids got up and took a book to them, you all are not intimidating to me at all anymore. As Dr. Parrish said, I'm Jean Eddy. I'm the current president of the Kiwanis Club of PCOSON. Our club is the largest and probably the most active civic organization in the city with over 110 members. The continued growth of our club is likely because our primary focus is the schools teaching self-confidence and community service. Our mission is improving the world, one child and one community at a time. It is an honor to be here tonight to recognize these four dedicated teachers, but do understand that while Kiwanis is making this presentation, it is really on behalf of the PCOSON community who hold our educators and school system in such high regard. So I have letters and a check for each of these teachers, and it's congratulations on being selected Teacher of the Year. PCOSON is blessed to have one of the highest-quality school systems in Virginia due to the dedicated efforts of all of our teachers. Being recognized as the top teacher in such an elite company is truly a testament to your commitment and your proficiency in educating our youth. The Kiwanis Club of PCOSON strives to embody the goals of Kiwanis International in positively improving the world, one child and one community at a time, through our charitable work with PCOSON School System. Your exemplary efforts for the 2018-2019 school year mirror our own to be a positive influence on our youth and our community. We are therefore very pleased and honored to present you with a $250 check in recognition of your outstanding work. Congratulations.
As they depart us to go back to their seats, please join me in congratulating all four of our Teachers of the Year and thanking Kiwanis for their hard work. Next, we'd like to recognize our Volunteer of the Month. And our Volunteer of the Month this month comes from the primary school. And we actually are recognizing co-volunteers of the month. So I'd like to ask that Mrs. Lindsay Jones and Mrs. Judy Pankoke come forward, please. PCOSON Primary is proud to recognize Mrs. Lindsay Jones and Mrs. Judy Pankoke as our Volunteers of the Month. Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Pankoke designed and coordinated our Dr. Seuss Decorations for Read Across America Week. Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Pankoke spent time planning the decorations and recruiting a team of volunteers to transform the primary school lobby and front hallway into a Dr. Seuss Wonderland, which became the backdrop for our Dr. Seuss activities for the week. Students, parents, and visitors were in awe of the life-size truffula trees, Lorax, Cat in the Hat, and Cat's Thingamajigger Mobile. Mrs. Jones and Mrs. Pankoke's creativity is also greatly appreciated in their individual volunteer PTO efforts. Mrs. Jones, parent to kindergarten Bridgette and second grader Luke, is the PTO Social Media and Spirit Night Coordinator. And Mrs. Pankoke, parent to second grader Carson, is our Natural Resources Coordinator. Our school is a better place because of their time and dedication to the primary school. And I do want to acknowledge that what you did in the lobby was fantastic. It really was awe-inspiring. Please join me in congratulating our two Volunteers of the Month. Next, we'd like to recognize our Senior of the Month. So I'd ask that Nathaniel Doggett come forward, please.
Nate has dedicated himself in academic rigor with taking numerous AP classes and maintaining an A average. He is a member of Academic Challenge, a Virginia Aerospace Science and Technology Scholar, chess club founder and president. He is a member and current president of Mu Alpha Theta, member and vice president of National Honor Society, member and vice president of Ping Pong Club. He also plays varsity tennis and varsity basketball. Nate is a member of the Science Honor Society, Key Club, and First in Robotics Competition from 2017 through 2019. Along with all the clubs and organizations listed, he has still managed to complete several research experiences such as the NASA Internship, NASA Mentorship, New Horizons' Governor's School for Science and Technology Science Fair, and the Tidewater Science Fair. And he has completed the entrepreneurship-designed and-coded-in Educational Math iOS app called Mastering Math, which is available to download on the Apple App Store for free. By the way, we thought we should mention that. After graduating in June, he will attend either Georgia Tech or Virginia Tech to major in Electrical and Computer Science. Please join me in congratulating Nate for being the Senior of the Month.
We have another recognition this evening, and that is the recognition for the primary school being a Virginia Breakfast Challenge winner. So before I describe this, I'd like to ask several people to come forward. So if Ms. Kim Griscoe, principal of the primary school, could come forward. Tina Wolf, who is the airmark manager. Cindy Davis, who was the former primary school cafeteria manager and still works with us. And Lori Johnson, who is the current primary school cafeteria manager.
The school breakfast program can ensure that kids get the morning nutrition they need, but too often, it can be challenging for students to access this critical meal. Nearly half of all students who rely on school meals miss out on breakfast each day. The 2018-2019 Virginia Breakfast Challenge called on public schools to increase the number of students who participate in breakfast programs by implementing a breakfast-after-the-bell model or by simply expanding their traditional model. 1,471 Virginia schools from 109 Virginia school divisions enrolled in this challenge. These schools and divisions competed from October 1st through December 31st, 2018. School winners were named based on breakfast participation increases over the 2017-2018 school year. School divisions were placed into one of four categories based on the division's enrollment. One elementary and one secondary school in each category won, based on breakfast participation growth over the past school year. The primary school won its category, and as a result of the new breakfast program that allows students to purchase breakfast in the classroom after the bell, the school's percentage of breakfast purchased and eaten rose by 110%. The school will receive $1,000 from the state association to be used to support school activities. Please join me in congratulating our primary school and our food services staff for achieving this accomplishment.
And I also want to thank Mr. Steve Happus, who works also closely with our food service program. So thank you. We have one final recognition this evening, and what we are going to do is to announce our Division Teacher of the Year, so our teachers do not know who that is yet. The school-based awards are part of the State Teacher of the Year selection process. Each division selects a Teacher of the Year to move on to the Region Two competition Each division selects a Teacher of the Year to move on to the Region Two competition for the State Teacher of the Year. Numerous criteria are used in evaluating the nominees, including the abilities of the teacher in the classroom and in communicating their message to a broad audience. Candidates are considered on the basis of the following criteria. Inspires students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn. Has the respect and admiration of students, parents, and colleagues. Plays an active and useful role in the community as well as in the school. Is poised and articulate and possesses the energy to withstand a taxing schedule. I have to say that I know the committee that selected the Division Teacher of the Year had a very difficult time doing so. It is at this time my pleasure to announce this evening that this year's Pacosa Teacher Please join me in congratulating Emily as she represents all of our fabulous teachers as she moves into the Region Two competition. Congratulations.
This time, we'll take a break.
I'm sorry.
Next up is Presentations and Reports, and our first report is Financial Update with Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to begin with the budget. The school board budget was submitted to the city, and the city manager incorporated our budget request into his proposed budget, and we are very optimistic that city council will approve the board's request for additional funding. As you know, there will be a joint meeting between the board and city council on April 22nd. The city manager did release the city's proposed budget last week with a plan for the city council to adopt the budget on May 14th. For those interested, the proposed budgets for the school division and the city can be found on the each respective website as well as at the Pacosa Public Library. Since we are in the final quarter of the fiscal year, we are preparing for the upcoming audit process. The audit contract for the city and the schools ended with the FY18 audit, so I recently participated on the RFP Selection Committee with the city staff to initiate a new contract. The city received four proposals and the committee interviewed three firms. Ultimately, the committee recommended to contract with Cherry Beckett LLP again for an initial three years and an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. And that concludes my report.
Comments there? Okay, thank you very much. Next up, Operations Update with PMS Modernization Project, Mr. Pappas.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, school board, Dr. Parrish. This evening's operation report, start off with maintenance, coming right off of the break since we've last met. Operation Maintenance Department was quite busy doing brick remediation at PPS, relamping at PES, painting and air filter changes all throughout the schools. It kept us quite busy. Transportation has also been very busy, training new drivers. Aside from the drivers and A's that you have in your consent agenda, there are three more trainees in various stages of preparedness, and we can't wait to get them behind the wheel or in our school buses helping students. As you know, PCPS has outsourced its food service and custodial services. Recently, two other school divisions, which are in the throes of deciding which way they're going to go, decided to come to PCPS and observe and talk to us about our food service operation as well as our custodial operation. It was a great experience for them. I'm happy to say that one school has still yet to decide. The other school selected their food service contractor as Aramark, and we hope that we helped them make a sound decision. In the area of PCP modernization, the architects continue to work on programming. In other words, they're identifying the instructional needs that need to be met through the modernization process itself. Once that's completed, the design work for the project will commence, and additionally, we anticipate field work will be getting underway in the next few weeks. An example would be an assessment of the HVAC system, the electrical system, and yet others will be on our premises doing additional measurements in and throughout the school. And that concludes the operations report.
Questions there, comments? Thank you, sir. Next is Instructional Update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Schiller, board members, and Dr. Parrish. For our instructional update this evening, we wanted to share information with you regarding our PE, Health, and Driver Education programs, as it's not an area that we often update for you. So thank you to all of our PE, our Health, and our Driver Education teachers for their help in gathering all of this information. At Pacosa Primary School, students are working to improve their muscle strength and endurance as well as work on goal-setting and personal achievements. This year, they have played floor hockey, basketball, soccer, kickball, and developed their locomotor skills through problem-solving games, paddle games, fitness stations, and throwing, catching, and batting activities. Second graders participated in the American Heart Association's Heart Challenge, formerly known as the Jump Rope for Heart, and raised over $6,000. Because of all the efforts for the American Heart Association, the primary school will receive a donation to use in their PE classes. On June 7th, the PE department, with the support from the faculty, staff, PTO, and many, many parent volunteers, will hold their annual field day for students. At the elementary school, students are participating in fitness games and engaging in various group games and challenges as well as activities that increase their cardiovascular endurance. Students are encouraged to walk laps during recess, and they keep track of their mileage. In May, all of the miles are added up, and the class that has walked the greatest number of miles gets to go on a one-day field trip to the Victory YMCA. The top walker from each grade level is also recognized. The students also participated in the American Heart Association's Kid Heart Challenge and raised over $3,700. Fifth graders participated in the jump rope contest, with the first-place winner Carolyn Harper completing over 200 consecutive jumps. At Pacosa Middle School, students are registered with the New Balance Foundation Billion Mile Race Challenge. The school has ranked in the top five of the United States and ranked number one in Virginia for the past three years. Students also participate in self-assessment fitness programs that reflect their own personal growth and their physical health. Students participated in a PBL project to design PE games that will be used in PE classes. As a concluding activity for the Drug Education Program, students participated in the Anti-Drug Campaign Art Walk, where students decorated the exterior sidewalks with anti-drug messages. The PE department sponsors the week-long Battle of the Classes competition, where students participate in cooperative games, a canned food drive, daily spirit competitions, coin wars, and a culminating event in the gym where students compete in front of their peers and guests for the top title, the class of top class. Title of top class, thank you. This year, it was the eighth graders. And finally, at Pacosa High School, students stay active in ninth and 10th grade PE by completing the Fitness Gram Conditioning and Testing Program. They're learning the history and rules of play for games such as archery, badminton, handball, lacrosse, ultimate frisbee, line dancing, ping pong, pickleball, and flag football. They engage in fitness activities that are designed to help them generate lifelong healthy lifestyles. Students in the 10th-grade Driver Education Program won the gold award for the Get It Together Seatbelt Competition and designed public service announcements. Students interacted with guest speakers to discuss tractor-trailer safety, and they got to view an electric car and compare the differences between a gas engine and an electric engine. Students in the ninth and 10th grade health classes researched the negative health impacts of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco, and from this work, a video was developed for students and parents and our community that highlighted the dangers of e-cigarettes, and that video can be found on our high school's website. Some of the other topics covered in health include drug and alcohol, tobacco prevention, body systems, conflict resolution, nutrition, mental health awareness, and CPR and first aid training. That concludes my report for this evening, Dr. Carter.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Great, thank you.
Very much. Any public comment tonight? Could you walk us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes, on the consent agenda, we have the approval for financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request, the approval of March's regular meeting, work session, and public hearing, and the authorization to dispose surplus property.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And a second? Second. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mostow?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Crowe?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six years.
And other matters of consideration, first item, consideration of approval of special education plans, school year 2019-20. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, you have a reading file enclosed in your packet that gives some detailed explanation about this, but each year, we do bring forward to you the Special Education Annual Plan and Report, and this does serve as our agreement with the Virginia Department of Education as to what we will do to implement the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, or IDEA, as it is more commonly referred to. In your reading file, it does provide some background information about the number of items that are supported through our special education plan and ultimately funding that we also receive as a result of IDEA. So at this point, at this time, I'd recommend approval of the plan as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Aye.
Ms. Mostow?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Crowe?
Aye.
Chair Hutter?
Aye.
Motion passes six years.
Next item, consideration of approval of the Perkins Grant School Year 2019-20.
Yes, again, we have here the actual grant that we are asking you to approve, and this does fall under the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Act. So this is, does include the funding that we receive from the federal government as a result of that act. In here, it does highlight the fact that we'll be receiving just over $17,000 from that grant, and that funding does go to instructional supplies as well as other opportunities for students and enables us to provide some professional development to our CTE teachers. I'd recommend approval of the Perkins Grant application as it is provided to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Aye.
Ms. Mostow?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Crowe?
Aye.
Chair Hutter?
Aye.
Chair Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six years.
And next item, consideration of second reading of changes to Policy 7-2.2 admission. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought forward to you for first reading at your last meeting the recommended changes for this policy, and these changes are as a result of our need to ensure that we are up to date on any of the requirements from the Every Child Succeeds Act or the ESSA Act, as well as McKinney-Vento legislation that drives what we do to support our students who are categorized as homeless. So you see here some updates on your actual policy and the track changes that we do need to make to ensure that we're lined up with all of those regulations. So I'd recommend this evening that you approve the second reading and change to the Policy 7-2.2.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Reimers?
Aye.
Ms. Mostow?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Crowe?
Aye.
Chair Hutter?
Aye.
Chair Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes six years.
Next item, consideration of first reading of changes to policies 6-Tech 3.8, English Learners, and 6-Tech 6.5, Group Tests, to the second reading. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we continue to move through our policies to make sure that we're up to date not only with state and federal law but also practices, and in this instance, we needed to bring forward a couple of changes to two policies. One, actually, the one that's 6-3.8, is changing the terminology to English learners. Previously, English learners were referred to as limited English proficiency students. So that allows us to make that change in your policy. Additionally, that policy referenced the No Child Left Behind Act, which is no longer in place, as we know ESSA is in place. So we are bringing those changes to you this evening. And the other policy labeled Group
Yes, on the Consent Agenda, we have the Approval for Financial Reports, the Approval of Personnel Action, the Authorization to Change Appropriation and to Accept and Expend Funds in accordance with the Attached Request, the Approval of March's Regular Meeting, Work Session, and Public Hearing, and the Authorization to Dispose or Plus Property.
Thank you ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? And a second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Aye.
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 And other matters of consideration, first item, Consideration of Approval of Special Education Plans, School Year 2019-20. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, you have a reading file enclosed in your packet that gives some detailed explanation about this, but each year, we do bring forward to you the Special Education Annual Plan and Report, and this does serve as our agreement with the Virginia Department of Education as to what we will do to implement the Individuals with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, or IDEA, as it is more commonly referred to. In your reading file, it does provide some background information about the number of items that are supported through our Special Education Plan, and ultimately, funding that we also receive as a result of IDEA. So, at this point, at this time, I'd recommend approval of the plan as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Aye.
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 Next item, Consideration of Approval of the Perkins Grant School Year 2019-20.
Yes, again, we have here are the actual grants that we are asking you to approve, and this does fall under the Carl Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, so this is, does include the funding that we receive from the federal government as a result of that act. In here, it does highlight the fact that we'll be receiving just over $17,000 from that grant, and that funding does go to instructional supplies, as well as other opportunities for students, and enables to provide some, us to provide some professional development to our CTE teachers. I'd recommend approval of the Perkins Grant application, as it is provided to you this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Aye.
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 And next item, Consideration of Second Reading of Changes to Policy 7-2.2 Admission. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought forward to you for first reading at your last meeting, the recommended changes for this policy, and these changes are as a result of our need to ensure that we are up to date on any of the requirements from the Every Child Succeeds Act, or the ESSA Act, as well as McKenney-Vento legislation that drives what we do to support our students who are categorized as homeless. So, you see here some updates on your actual policy and the track of changes that we do need to make to ensure that we're lined up with all of those regulations. So, I'd recommend this evening that you approve the second reading and change to the Policy 7-2.2.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
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 Next item, Consideration of First Reading of Changes to Policies 6-Tech 3.8 English Learners and 6-Tech 6.5 Group Test to Second Reading. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we continue to move through our policies to make sure that we're up to date, not only with state and federal law, but also practices. And in this instance, we needed to bring forward a couple of changes to two policies. One, actually, the one that's 6-3.8 is changing the terminology to English Learners. Previously, English Learners were referred to as Limited English Proficiency Students, so that allows us to make that change in your policy. Additionally, that policy referenced the No Child Left Behind Act, which is no longer in place, as we know, ESSA is in place. So, we are bringing those changes to you this evening. And the other policy, labeled Group Test, still included information about the Virginia Grade Level Alternative, or what we used to call VIGLA, because we have acronyms for everything in education. But, that test is no longer offered through the state testing program, so we need to remove that section from the policy. So, this evening, I'm recommending you to approve, to move these policies to Second Reading, in which you'll do a final approval in net.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Reimers?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And last item, Consideration of Approval of Proclamations for Public School Volunteer Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week, National School Nurse Day. Public School Volunteer Week, Parents and Community Involvement is a significant factor in the success of schools. By becoming a volunteer, parents and community members are providing an invaluable contribution to the education of our students. During school year, numerous volunteers are spending many hours serving Pecosin City Public Schools as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, club leaders, booster club members, PTO, PTA members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, and in countless other ways, and we see evidence of that every month. Teacher Appreciation Week, I think Harper Edwards's testimony, when she talked about how the school had changed her life, she referenced teachers and all the impact that they had on her, and I think that's a shining example of good work that our teachers do. Their work to open students' minds, ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and teachers fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors. We honor the dedicated men and women who lend their passion and skills educating our children, because we believe teaching is one of the most valuable professions in the country. Each and every teacher in the city of Pecosin is essential to student success. Their efforts result in increased student achievement throughout the city and greater confidence in the school system. School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Week, nutritious meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and staff at Pecosin City Public Schools' Meals and Nutrition Department are committed to providing helpful nutritious meals to the School Division's children. The hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals help mature, nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and again, we saw that with the Breakfast Challenge. That was an incredible program. Good to know that all those kids are getting fit properly. And School Nurse Appreciation Day, all students should have their health needs safely met, all in school setting. School nurses are professional nurses who advance the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. School nurses support the health and educational success of children and youth by developing and providing programs and leadership. Do I have a motion to approve those proclamations?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments there? Reimers?
Aye.
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 And next is Communications. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that we are having the joint meeting with you and City Council on the 22nd. I'll do a very short presentation, just a summary of our budget and budget requests, as well as a little update on the PMS Modernization Project, since, as we well know, the City was so gracious in providing us the funding for that project, so I look forward to that on Monday night. And my understanding is we can anticipate Council to pass their budget in mid-May, probably May 14th, so we're still a little bit away until then. Just a reminder to our community that we have a number of spring activities occurring, which I have a feeling that Brendan will be sharing with us when he does his comments as well, and testing is also starting, so we certainly will have, before we see you again, some SOL testing starting, also into AP testing at the high school. So, I just want to make sure, especially our students, understand we still have almost a full quarter of school left, and it will be filled with lots of activities. And I want to encourage the community to continue to go to our website, where we are updating the PMS Modernization Project page as soon as we have updates for them, so that the community knows what we're doing with that, and they can get the link to that both from the Division's homepage, as well as through the middle school's homepage. So, I'm hoping that they are staying tuned into what we're doing with that project. And those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you ma'am. Brendan?
Thank you. The first report comes from the Primary School. Pecosin Primary School is off to a great start for the fourth quarter. Our students and staff spent the week reviewing school-wide expectations to reestablish positive school behavior. We recognized our March Bucket Filling students with our monthly Bucket Filler Breakfast, and all classes celebrated their Golden Bulls earned in the fourth quarter with a class vote for Golden Bull Celebration. We are thankful for partnerships within our community, as our preschool students visited with a volunteer from the SPCA with a STEM outreach program, and our PTO supplied all students with a book to keep and read over spring break. Our school also participated in a Spirit Week this week, as April is the month of the military child. Our students had themed days last week, then had guest readers from the high school whose parents were in the military. Pecosin Primary and Pecosin High School students of military families enjoyed cookies and punch together, and a group photo was taken to post on our school Twitter account. We also had eight students recognized for placing in the Pecosin Public Library's Essay Writing Contest. Two of our classes participated in the Skype session last week with Dr. Jane Goodall. Students listened to Dr. Goodall's share about her work with chimpanzees, and were given the chance to ask questions in an online chat session. This opportunity was coordinated through our librarian, technology resource teacher, and our classroom teachers. Pecosin Primary thanks the School Board for the chance to share the importance of establishing a reading routine at home through our reading specialist presentation this evening. Our community's support of building reading routines at home has long-lasting rewards for our students and their families. The next report comes from the Elementary School. On March 27th and 28th, our fifth-grade classes presented the musical presentation, Our Musical Earth, directed by Ms. Heredy, which was a review raising awareness for our beautiful planet. Both nights were hit with a packed house. We came back from spring break to an awesome buy-on, buy-one-get-one book fair. The book fair will be open until 3:00 PM on Wednesday. There are books for students and their parents, so parents, come on over to PES and pick out a book to read. The K Kids went to the Learning Garden across from PMS last week and helped the master gardeners pull weeds. This Friday, the fourth-grade classes go to Richmond for the day. This is a field trip in which students look forward to, and is just in time for their VA Studies SOL test. What a great way to review. PES has some Spirit Weeks coming up, so stay tuned for more information about them. The next report comes from the Middle School. April is National Library Month. This Friday, PMS will host nationally-known author and cartoonist Nathan Hale, who will provide engaging presentations for students in all grade levels through English classes. The library will also host a Skype event next Monday for seventh and eighth graders, with bestselling author April Hill. On April 25th, PMS will celebrate Poem in Your Pocket Day. Students are invited to write a poem or bring their favorite poem to carry around in their pocket on this day. Poems will also be available in first-period classes that morning. Poem in Your Pocket prizes will be given out each class period throughout the day. Several students are being recognized at PMS for academic excellence this month. 259 students earned honor roll recognition for third quarter, and 31 students are being inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Pecosin Middle School students recently raised $328 for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society through a Pennies for Patients campaign hosted by our Student Council Association. Our all-in character education program will focus on kindness for the fourth quarter. The final report comes from the high school. The final quarter of the school year means that Pecosin High School is charging full speed ahead. Students continue to be engaged in meaningful learning experiences across the curriculum. For example, advanced math students calculated the rate of speed for a Ferris wheel under a variety of circumstances. Students in Spanish classes worked together to interview administrators and plan travel experiences in the target language, while students in chemistry explored concepts of collision theory. Continuing our bullying prevention efforts, students participated in a bullseye lesson about spreading kindness and provided feedback on a variety of scenarios for bullying and cyberbullying. The talents of our Islanders were honored in a plethora of ways this past month, with our two Odyssey of the Mine teams taking second place at the state competition and qualifying for the world competition. Additionally, PHS students have been recognized by NASA for their inventions as part of the NASA Hunch Program, with five students receiving feedback from Johnson Space Center on their designs of both a tool pouch for astronauts and an augmented reality program. Senior Gabe Williams was selected to participate in the finals of the Norfolk State University Business Communication Competition, which will occur at the end of this month. Additionally, six PHS students were recognized in the high school category of the Friends of Pecosin Public Library Essay Contest, with Zoe Azarovsky taking the top prize. We encourage the community to see our Islanders in action through our spring sports, our spring band and chorus concerts, as well as our spring musical Grease, which will be held this Thursday through Saturday. Be sure to check our website for all of the dates and for the latest accomplishments of our students and events within the school community. This concludes my reports.
Thank you Brendan. Mr. Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel honored tonight to both live in Wendy Green's community in that presentation, and I also live on Forest Road, so it's a good night for me, with the Teacher of the Year also. I had no idea, although I knew Wendy Green was our reading specialist, I guess, so, had no idea what she does. That's way beyond the after-school half-an-hour thing with a student I thought she was doing. She's involving the parents in our community in reading. I think it's a tremendous program. I just want to thank her for the time she puts into that program. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Mostella?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I too would like to congratulate everyone that was recognized here tonight. Through Wendy's presentation, I realized how much I missed being involved with the primary school and elementary school, as my children are in middle school and high school, so I did reach out to her. She said if anyone watching was interested in coming into reading, send her an email, and she can arrange that, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always terrific to hear about the outstanding achievements and upcoming activities that are going on throughout our school district, and kudos to Brendan for the work he does, and the principals for providing that detailed report. Always nice to hear about the good things happening. I also wanted to congratulate all four of our Teachers of the Year in the respective school, primary, elementary, middle school, and high school, and to Ms. First for the recognition for School by Division Teacher of the Year, and best of luck in the regional competition coming. And it was good to see some Ms. Jones, Ms. Pancake, recognized for the work they do at the primary school, having an active daughter in the primary school now. What they did with the decorations was pretty spectacular, so, but it also takes the work of a lot of other volunteers as well, so they were recognized for the work that they did, and that's much appreciative. And the work that Mrs. Green doing with our young readers is exceptional as well, and there's a tremendous amount of parental grandparents that come in and spend an hour or two a week on behalf of our School Division, and I know the kids really appreciate that one-on-one time, so, thanks.
Thank you Chairman Carter. I would echo a lot of what we've already heard tonight, so congratulations to the four teachers. It was outstanding to hear kind of what they do outside of school, you know, the traditional school hours to support their own education and their fulfillment and development as educators, and what they're doing in the communities as well. So, you know, it is, as several of them said, it's beyond the love of learning, it's a love of the heart and giving that to the community, so it's great, great teachers and principals in the community, so thank you for all the efforts. And again, Mrs. Green and the reading group, I think that's just outstanding, so keep up the good work, and congratulations, Steve, for being recognized for the food, because that's a big deal. It's hard for kids to study when they are thinking about food, so thank you for all your hard work and all the food service work from that perspective.
Thanks, Sir. Ms. Sheeler?
Yeah, I'm pretty much just tagging along onto that. I did talk to my neighbor and friend who is a teacher, and she was very excited, because she was nominated to be Teacher of the Year. She was excited just to be recognized for the things that she has come up with, and that was so, it was so interesting to see how her face has lit up, just brought home to me how important it is to recognize the fine efforts of our teachers. I also wanted to say that I was reading in the booklet about a contribution that we got from Booze Allen, who, a friend of mine, Greg Jekowicz, works for Booze Allen. He also volunteers over at the high school with the band, Doug Spruill, and I just, I think it's wonderful that we have volunteers that are as dedicated as he is.
Thank you. I don't even know how to sum it up. We did some great things in this school system, and I am glad that it gets recognition it deserves. We don't have enough time here, obviously, or meet often enough to recognize all the wonderful things our teachers and our staff do, but just know that it's very much appreciated, and it is having a very positive impact on kids and our community, so thanks to all the work, all... And, do we have any material for Board Review?
We do not this evening.
With that, we will adjourn to closed session to discuss personnel matters.